I am both satisfied that the discussion regarding that will lead to...
A hopeful conclusion for the city?
We haven't met with the developer yet, which we'll be doing tomorrow to talk about...
Who developers?
Crystal Geyser.
Is a developer.
To talk about road impacts, because the developer would be responsible for that. I do feel like we made some progress with the county this afternoon.
I agree, we did make some, yeah. They were pretty open to listening to us, and hopefully tomorrow we'll get the same response.
So you don't feel that particular issue is something that should hold up the CEIR process at this point?
At this point, I don't see a need to create a delay.
Yeah, I mean, this meeting was very different from last week's meeting, where we had a fair number of our local citizens come forward saying that they invested heavily into their own research on their end, spending many tens of thousands of dollars to research the impact that this plant will have on their neighborhood, on our community. And we did ask for more time for Ann Plant to review those 980-some-odd pages, which she didn't have time to do in the amount of time that she was given. So I think we initially went to a timeframe, can we have the normal allotted six weeks to review all this documentation that our citizens funded? And negotiation came back, they had one, we were given one week versus the six weeks that we'd asked for. So I think as representations of the citizens of our community, an amount of time and investment they put to do their end of the research, it's only honoring to them to make sure that we also address many of their concerns, which I feel like we haven't yet, which is, we talked about the three different options, using the leach field versus using the wastewater treatment plant, I haven't heard any conversation about that, among other things.
Right, and that is on the list to discuss with Crystal Geyser tomorrow. The city has taken and still has made it very clear that the city's position is all wastewater, including the wash water, should go to the treatment plant, not to the leach field. I anticipate, based upon the discussions and representations we've had with Crystal Geyser over the last three or four years, that that's their preference as well. I would hope and expect that we can get agreement tomorrow, that yes, they are agreeable to that, the developer is agreeable to that. If not, that, yeah, that would be a real deal breaker for the city. But I don't anticipate that being a problem tomorrow. Tonight, perhaps we can, at this point, perhaps we can move forward, and we may want to take it in stages. First of all, I've expressed my sense, I'd like to hear from the rest of you, that the city of Mount Shasta does not currently see a need to recirculate the EIR, we don't see a need to do that. All right, I'm seeing three noes. Does anyone want to make a motion on that one issue?
All right, I'll move that the council should not request that the county recirculate the FEIR for purpose of extending it to a future date.
One second. All right, any discussion?
Well, again, since I mentioned that the community invested heavily into doing their own scientific research on the impact, environmental impact, and that that research hasn't been read, and that we didn't have sufficient time to read that, and Ann Plant did not include that in their analysis, although she requests, you know, she did state a desire to read, saying we didn't really give the citizens' report sufficient time. And I'm not, I'm not necessarily saying, if I vote against this, I'm voting against it, because, not that I'm in favor of rerouting it, but I'm saying, if they're not going to give us the proper six weeks for enough review time, which I think is what is typically allowed it, then it's not really being respectful of all the work that our citizens have put in, in regards to this project.
As I understand, there's going to be that six-week period anyway for submitting any, anything that you want. So at that time, they're more than welcome, and I recommend it, they go ahead and submit that at that time for the review. Bruce, isn't that how the process works? Is, they do have an automatic, there's an automatic six-week process, correct?
They have the process with the due dates for the response that has been given for the certification, the EIR at the planning commission, and then there is the, the process goes on the board of supervisors, it's extended period, in which the board will reconsider all these items on appeal before this becomes final. So you do have extended time before you commit to the board.
Any further discussion? All right, let's have a vote, and that's on the motion that we direct staff to communicate to the county that the city of Mount Shasta does not see the need for recirculation of the EIR, does not request that. All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed?
Okay, opposed.
Okay, three to one. Let's, let's take another invite here, and that would be, I would invite a motion regarding whether or not to direct staff to convey to the county whether or not the city of Mount Shasta wishes to threaten or actually bring litigation against the county relevant to the CEIR process.
Could you repeat that, please?
Did you all hear me?
Yes.
All right.
You asking for a motion?
Request that the council move to direct city managers and staff not to pursue litigation against the county regarding the FEIR.
Is there a second?
I second.
All right, there's a motion and a second to direct...
Excuse me, maybe you should have public comment on that before a vote, the second item.
All right, is there any public comment on that? We have a motion and a second to direct staff that not to threaten or bring a lawsuit based upon the FEIR. Vicki.
I am somewhat naive about the law and regulations, but I did not know this was an item on the agenda, nor did the probably 60 people who would have shown up, had we known that this was going to be discussed, and actually that you would rescind your previous action from last week. I didn't, I see under number nine, it doesn't even mention which meeting you're discussing. I only stayed because I saw other people here representing Crystal Geyser and Mount Shasta Open for Growth, so there was no way for me to know that there was going to be an action item this evening. I think it's completely inappropriate for you to have taken action at this point, or to commit yourself to action when you haven't even met with Crystal Geyser tomorrow. I ask you to please consider that the public would have been here, you would have had the auditory impact, had they known that you were going to be discussing this, had it been noticed, and I guarantee that you would have been surprised at their comments and their shock at your rescinding your previous vote. I also think that it's unfortunate that Mayor Kathy Mortar isn't here today. I feel that it is, you're treading on dangerous territory. I actually concur with John Kenny, I think that commitment, this seems to be a commitment to a course that you have really nothing, you have no knowledge of where you're going with this. You've had discussion with the county, I believe you said with Terry Barber, with Lisa Dixon, Nixon? Is it Nixon or Dixon?
Nixon.
Nixon, and with...
Natalie Reed.
Pardon me?
Natalie Reed.
Yeah, with your county council. But this is private meeting with two of you, we don't know where this is going, you seem to think that they're moving in the right direction. I think it's wonderful to negotiate and get all of this settled, but I think it certainly is appropriate to have that fiscal statement of overriding considerations included in the EIR, because that's where the teeth come, you know, that's where you have an agreement, and you have understanding of what the consequences are going to be for this community. I think it is your undoubted fiscal and fiduciary responsibility to continue along the lines that you have taken previously. You were well represented, Bruce was very gentle and firm, I think that you will be very surprised at the reaction that you'll see in the community if you do persist and take this action this evening. I also think that I would suggest that you invite Crystal Geyser to indemnify you, even at this late date, basically almost four years after we suggested that to you. I don't think any taxpayers' money should be spent on this. I think the corporation, and certainly always, they pay for the EIR, this is done all over the country, and particularly in California, and they should also be responsible for paying for the legal fees. The county regularly approves more, an increased budget for Bill Abbott and his firm to come and fight for them, and to represent them, and he was there at the hearing, and I think the same should be true for the city. It's only logical, this is not something that you can, you can just kick down the road, I think this is kicking it down the road. So I really wonder about the notification, the lack of identification, and then a vote with no action item noticed. Thank you.
Any other public comment? Dorian.
So, again, I just want to remind everybody, this has been four years, and countless days and hours of time that Crystal Geyser's invested in our community, and that all they want is a permit to start their business. And to understand that a sister government wouldn't sue another sister government in doing due process is a reasonable thing. I don't think we want to be unneighborly to a government that is right contiguous to us. Valenzuela's right in the back hearing all this, he's one of our community, he wants what's best for our community, he lives in our city, he was a former city council member, he's a reasonable man, as the board of supervisors are. It's very unreasonable to think that Crystal Geyser would pay for the city of Mount Shasta to sue them, and for them to indemnify, I mean, that is like crazy-making. So, again, I support your positions, all you're doing is do what reasonable people would want to do, and I support your motion and hope it gets passed. Thank you.
Any other public comment?
If I may, excuse me, the Crystal Geyser will be indemnifying the city for the waste discharge permit issues, and I think have been paying our fees for the part of the CEIR process dealing with that.
Okay, bringing it back to council, whoops, not yet.
I don't see this as an agenda item.
Agenda nine is...
Council reports on attending an appointment outside meetings.
Rosalyn? If I can help answer your question. The agenda was amended, it is an agenda item, it is in the book, but there was a glitch in making photocopies for tonight's meeting, which, and you have one of those photocopies, the full agenda, and the amended agenda that has agenda number nine is available at the back table there.
Larry Stock, Mount Shasta. The CEIR law is probably the most comprehensive in all the world. We have a great guideline to go by, you have followed the rules, the county has followed the rules, Crystal Geyser has followed the rules, even the opponents have somewhat followed the rules. The rules are there, they're in place, you're following them, and it has a timeline that go along with those rules, and you're in that timeline, and let this thing get going. I applaud you and what you're doing.
Okay, thank you. Any other public comment? All right, now bringing it back to council.
Yeah, this evening was the first that I heard, maybe I missed something at last week's meeting, this is the first I've heard about a lawsuit, so I feel a little bit uneducated about what, how you considered this, and how this came up, and why we're voting on it tonight.
Yeah, we have on tonight's agenda to discuss what happened at the September 20 planning commission meeting, the county planning commission meeting, and to give direction to staff going forward. There was an impression given at that planning commission meeting, as I understand it, that the city might take action to file a lawsuit against the county.
In regards to what?
In regards to the FEIR CEIR process. The question then, for us, is, does the city council really want to take a position of suing the county over the EIR process, spending money of our constituents, spending money of all the citizens in Siskiyou County in litigation? And that, I think, is the motion that is before us to vote on. As I understand the motion, and I'll repeat it, is to direct staff to communicate to the county that the city is not contemplating and does not plan to bring a lawsuit related to this process.
Well, first of all, I don't understand why we have to make a motion on it. Second of all, if it was indeed the understanding during the planning commission, county planning commission meeting, that they came up, there must have been a reason that it came up, and then is that reason still valid?
All right, is there any further discussion?
Well, I think the reason this, excuse me, this issue came up, and I brought it up, is that you're in the CEIR process, and you're responding to comments to the, in this case, the planning commission, which is the body delegated to certify the EIR, and your comments were to the adequacy. You're asking for more time to consider this, and more time to have discussions with the appropriate officials, commissioners, or the supervisors to resolve these issues. Short of them extending the timeline, what that triggers is a deadline that you either have to appeal it with ultimate movement towards a lawsuit, or you have to back away from it. The city council has not taken a position on that issue. You've said you wanted more time, you said the EIR was inadequate in specific respects, which you communicated in writing, and I believe I said to the planning commission, if you don't give the city more time, you start to lock us into this narrow set of options. We either have to back away, or have to start the appeal process, and so that's how that issue came up. And the motion, as I understand it, is the city council intending to clearly clarify their position on that issue.
And the county did, the planning commission did postpone for a week anyway, which has given us some additional time to communicate our concerns and discuss our concerns with the county and with the developer.
Yes, they closed the period for comment, but they continued the meeting to this Wednesday at noon for final decision-making.
Any further discussion by council?
It sounds to me that it's still fall short, I mean, we asked for six weeks to have negotiations, and they agreed to one week. So it sounds like to me that we're missing out on an opportunity to continue to build this relationship with the county. If we agree at this point to let them decide about the EIR, then we're passing up our area, a time of negotiation where we can continue to build that relationship with the county, continue to make agreements about this particular project, continue to iron out this project and future projects with the county. If, once that, once that deal goes through, then you lose your leverage on that.
Any further comment? All right, let's have a vote. All those in favor of the motion, say aye?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed?
Opposed.
Okay, three to one.
Did he have a comment? Did you have a comment?
Pardon me?
Did you have a comment? I thought you said...
Oh, just, maybe, I don't know if it's going to help, but first of all, there's, I mean, the city can only, is limited to the actions it can take. Every action that's taken so far has been in compliance with CEIR. Now, if the city wanted to bring suit, they couldn't bring, I'm not aware that they could bring suit now, the city can't force recirculation of the EIR. The city could say, we're dissatisfied, and the county can do what they want to do. What happens, happens. If the EIR is certified, then it can get appealed to the board of supervisors, the board of supervisor does whatever they're going to do, and if people are dissatisfied, including really the city, if it ever wanted to, they do what they think is appropriate. So it's not like we're going to force somebody to do something, because we really can't at this point.
Does staff feel as though we have clarified the city's position at this point? All right. Does council want to take any further action on agenda item number nine? All right, seeing that will close action on agenda item number nine, we'll move to agenda item number 12. This is moving to closed session conference with legal counsel regarding existing litigation pursuant to government code 5495-6.9, two cases, City of Mount Shasta versus Chapman et al., and City of Mount Shasta versus Chu et al. I anticipate that this will probably take not more than 10 to 15 minutes, after which we will return to open session, and continue with the other items. Six, council and staff comments. All right, we're back in open session. Our city manager is not back yet, so we'll start with agenda item number six. How about if we start with council comments? Are there any council comments?
Yeah, since it's open floor.
All right.
I was going to save a lot of this for the outside meetings agenda, but since the attorney left, I can talk freely now. Okay, so I want to say thank you, this is very...
Oh, excuse me, I apologize.
What?
I did not report on the closed agenda. As to City of Mount Shasta versus Chapman, direction was given, no action taken. As to City of Mount Shasta versus Chu, no action was taken. Thank you. Councilmember Wagner?
The city was gracious enough to lend me the city vehicle to go to the LEAGUE Expo, and I've been working for several months with both the city manager and the mechanic to figure out how to better handle and take care of this vehicle. I was happy to find, when I picked up the vehicle, that it was clean and ready and full, the gas tank was full, so it was very good condition, the windshield was repaired, and Jay was also pleasantly surprised when I said that I spent the time vacuuming and wiping the car down before I returned it to the city, so he's very grateful for that. So I feel like I have a nice agreement and partnership now with Jay, and I think that if we continue to take care of some of our city property the way, this way, that they'll only improve. So I hope that we can be conscious of taking care of our own city property.
Excellent.
While I was at the LEAGUE, I ran into an architect, I asked her to look at the library RFP, she said no, I said, tell me your obstacles, and she said, the obstacles for our firm, and they're in Sacramento, on this RFP are primarily our geographic distance relative to the site of this project. If it were a larger project for which we had special expertise that other firms did not, we would be competitive. However, in this case, with libraries being a less specialized project type, we believe it would be a challenge for us to be successful compared with the firms with library experience who are more local to your area. We have come across them in the past, and they are great in what they do. So it's interesting that even as far as Sacramento, they feel like they can't be competitive, and maybe because it's only 4,200 feet, maybe this particular firm works with larger projects. And then I guess I'll leave my other comments for the, I do think that since the director brought up the library capacity issue, it would be nice to give direction to see whether, since this project, actually building a building is going to take some time, that we address the library capacity issue sooner rather than later. I think there are some steps we can take immediately to up that number, to up that capacity number. So I'd like to see that as a future agenda item.
Okay. Other council comments? Staff comments? Agenda item number six.
Yes, staff also attended the LEAGUE California Cities Meeting in Sacramento. Found it very worthwhile, I think, I attended some very good sessions, I think the one that I felt was the most productive was the managers' meeting, where we meet, you know, our fellow city managers from around the state, discuss issues that their cities are facing. It's always surprising how similar the issues are throughout this diverse state. It's time well spent.
All right, let's move on to agenda number eight, unless there's other comment on seven. Seeing none, agenda number eight, consent agenda. City manager recommends approval of the following consent agenda items, all resolutions or ordinances on this agenda or added here too shall be introduced or adopted as applicable by title only, and the full reading thereof is hereby waived. A, approval of minutes, September 11, 2017, regular city council meeting, and September 18, 2017, special city council meeting. Item B, approval of disbursements, accounts payable, September 11, 2017, gross payroll and taxes for period ending September 10, 2017. Item C, monthly financial investment report. Item D, resolution, which would be... CCR-17-62, expressing support for the Siskiyou Startup Weekend.
I move that the city council approve consent agenda numbers A, B, C, and D, as just read.
All right, is there a second?
A second.
Any discussion?
Yeah, on the startup weekend, has that been sufficiently publicized? Are you, do you have enough participants? Last time it was got postponed, right?
My understanding is it's not going to be postponed, it is going forward, and with the help of Giovanni, we'll have a good notification to the public.
Okay, so nothing has been advertised yet in the paper? Interesting.
There was an article in last week's paper regarding Siskiyou Startup Weekend, a very good article.
Okay.
Good, sure. Who runs the Siskiyou Startup Weekend? What organization?
Siskiyou, the fiscal sponsor for the event is locally is JDI. The program is based upon a program that Google put together, Google for Entrepreneurs and Techstars, which was a startup that turned successful. On the organizing committee, there's Nancy Swift of JDI, Bright Nickelstock, Jeff Harkness, Sam Lanier, myself, and then some others.
Can you get Michael Murray?
He's not on the organizing committee.
He'd be great to have.
He would be. I agree. So, any other questions or comments before we take a vote on the Consent Agenda? Seeing and hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Is that unanimous? Unanimous. All right, let's move to Agenda Item Number Eight, then. Active Transportation Committee Letter to the County. By way of background, the Active Transportation Committee, ATC, is charged by the city council to advise on matters related to human-powered transportation options like walking and cycling. The committee actively pursues grants to fund infrastructure and programs to further the city's goals. The committee consistently loses points or on grant applications due to the lack of regional and county pedestrian and bicycle plans. Siskiyou County prepared a draft pedestrian and bicycle master plan in 2000. The draft plan was created by an outside agency and was not ratified by the county Board of Supervisors. The request and formation of a county plan has not been renewed since. Development of a county pedestrian and bicycle plan would not only benefit the City of Mount Shasta, but other organizations focused on active transportation. The county plan has the potential to coordinate the various organizations and programs while opening funding opportunities. So there is a proposed letter in our packet directed to the Siskiyou County Board of Supervisors asking the county to adopt a pedestrian and bicycle master plan.
May I comment?
Yes, we have that. The proposed action is for the Active Transportation Committee and city staff. They recommend the city council approve the letter that's attached in our agenda and to transmit that letter to the Siskiyou County Board of Supervisors. So the matter is open for discussion. Councilmember Wagner?
Yeah, we were... Various members of ATC were tasked to contact various organizations. I don't currently know if other members of ATAC had been successful in gaining support for this measure, but I did get a message back from Kimberly Paul, the general manager of McLeod Community Services District. She and her board of directors is in support of the letter. I also spoke with Bryce Craig today. Their city's going to address that on their October 5 meeting, and I'm currently texting Bob Hall about the issue. So I was tasked with contacting those four cities, and some of the other members were asked to contact various trail associations, so they probably contacted Juliana directly, if they did at all. So I just wanted to report that we do have support outside of our city.
Very well, thank you. Further discussion? All right, is there any proposed action?
I move that we agree to send the attached letter and approve it to Siskiyou County Board of Supervisors.
All right, is there a second to approve the attached letter and transmit the letter to the Siskiyou County Board of Supervisors?
Second to that motion.
All right, motion and second, without further discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Say aye.
I was just wondering.
That is unanimous?
Quick question, are you going to include other... Is that just going to be from the City of Mount Shasta? Are you going to include other organizations that support?
That letter just from Mount Shasta.
Okay.
I think each of the agencies will send their own letters and...
Well, my understanding was that Juliana was going to include other organizations on the... In the support letter if she knew beforehand. I'm not sure.
All right, let's move to Agenda Item Number Ten, Future Agenda Items.
What about attendance at outside meetings?
Let's move to Agenda Item Number... Let's move to the council reports on attendance at appointed and outside meetings. Who wants to start?
I'll start, since mine is fairly short. The DEAC meeting was postponed to this Wednesday, so I have nothing to report on that front. I did attend on September 11 meeting. Bruce was there, and Tim was there regarding potential financing possibilities for things like the Siskiyou Museum transaction taxes and working in collaboration with the REC District as to find means to fund all these wonderful projects that have been put forward over the decades, really, at this point. Those would be the 100 miles of trail that the Trail Association is working on and received a large grant from McComma Foundation to take care of a sizable portion. Actually, it is 38 miles. I thought it was 13. 38 miles is correct, so a third of it right there has been funded. The museum is looking for help, as we already know. Siskiyou Land Trust is looking for some help with financing the project here on city land, and that would be the... I think it's called the Discovery Garden and Trail across from Sisson Junior High School. From my recollection, I believe Bruce was tentative about carrying the discussion too much further because he wanted to talk with some bond advisors and consultants regarding things before pursuing this, and that's where I'll leave it.
We had looked into this, and one of the issues that came up was, you have these both nonprofit groups and public groups, all of which, of course, are looking for money, have wonderful projects, and how do we have a single jurisdiction that could incorporate all these different groups into one initiative? And the issue came up about who has proper jurisdiction over a large enough geographical area. Well, the answer to that appeared to be the Parks and Rec Commission. Unfortunately, their ability to fund, or the issues they can fund, are constricted by their charge of responsibility, which wouldn't include the other groups. So at that point, we came to, what is the mechanism with which to do this? And we have not been able to get feedback as yet. So before we go any further, if the council ever wants to consider this, we... Staff has to be in a position to be able to say to the council, if you want to do this, this is the mechanism through which to do it. And we're not there yet, but we are working on it.
And that was one meeting I went to.
Who's next?
Okay, I went to the League of California Cities Expo, highly recommended. Basically, I felt like I got full of fuel for the entire next year, and being a city council member, I feel like I've got all sorts of information, excitement about the job, greater knowledge. So it was fantastic, highly recommend. I mainly focused on technology tracks, so I went to a talk on wireless, smart cities, and IT. The general advice that I heard from them was get ahead of the wave of technology that's coming instead of getting hit by it. So it's like, get ahead of the wave because it's here. And even I had some comments at the expo that said they were surprised to see this many technology talks going on, so we're here, the future's here now. But I've... Let's see, I had some other comments here. Where'd I put them? Expo sessions summary, they had great keynote speakers, two really fantastic ones. Informative breakout sessions, good opportunity to build bridges all across California. So you got to speak with all sorts of other cities, and the vendors doing all sorts of things across California. And these people were very expert at building bridges, so I have a new purpose in life, build bridges wherever I go, basically, because I haven't been doing that, obviously. And then, yeah. The other meeting we went to, I went to, Tim was there also, was on the broadband. We had a small lunch meeting at Lilly's with City of Weed and the City of Dunsmere. We want to continue, hopefully we'll schedule a couple more meetings, right? But we have a deadline, October 5, from CTC to review that initial report that they come out. So we have a deadline to review the broadband strategic and business plan by October 5, as well as all the Excel spreadsheets that go along with that from mid-May. And one other comment, quick. One of the clever things they did at the expo was that they scheduled the expo during the last three days of legislature... The legislature being in session, so right before all the votes happened. So while I was there, SB 649, which was the one that we wrote a letter about, is about the wireless technology coming into cities, passed in the Senate. And right after it passed, I went to a talk on wireless technology, and AT&amp;T was there, and there was quite a bit of tension in the room. And it's on the governor's desk, and it's up to him to either veto or sign it by October 15. And then, when I came back home, I watched the session, the public comment session on that 641 Assembly Meeting, and...
649?
649, yeah. And it turns out that there's a lot of very pro and very against, and the pro people were business and chamber primarily. They wanted it. You know, people... Businesses realize that high-speed internet is necessary for success in their businesses, and chambers recognize that, too. And then the opposed are the cities because they feel like we're going to lose local control. Basically, this bill says that AT&amp;T or any of the wireless providers can come in and install their wireless, their small cell wireless technology without really coordinating with the city if they don't have to. Now, at this talk, AT&amp;T was there, and he said, "Oh, but we want to work with the cities." And, you know, I mean, of course, they're saying, "Yes, of course, we want to work with the cities." What does that have to do with us? Not much, because wireless technologies are going to concentrate on, of course, the areas where they get the most return on investment. So we're a small rural area in Northern California, so chances are, they're not going to come in here and install their small cells. So in a sense, it really doesn't matter for us, SB 649. We still need to figure out for ourselves how to go forward, although, obviously, for AT&amp;T's, this small cell technology is where they're going, so.
I went to a resiliency meeting, and I forgot my notes, but there was really... It was a four-hour meeting, and it was really a good, good meeting. There's a lot of avenues for funding that we weren't aware of. They were a group that was incredibly enthusiastic and really wants to help us with our plans for, you know, for getting grants. And it was really good, really good. So next meeting, I'll bring all my notes and pass them around.
Question? Resiliency, is this something that Juliana's working, that type of stuff? Was she there, too?
She was there, yeah. Maybe she can give a report next. She'll give a report next meeting.
Are your notes hard copy notes or soft copy?
Soft, mine.
Do you want to just forward them to Catherine, and then she'll forward them to us?
Yeah.
Okay. And then, you haven't done an alternative housing meeting yet?
Some people are in Hawaii and other various locations around the earth. We will as soon as they get back.
All right, thank you. I would like to comment on a couple of outside meetings. One would be the 2017 League of California Cities Annual Conference that Councilmember Wagner reported on. I spent most of my time at the city attorney's section, listening to all the case and statute updates affecting the city on various issues from SEQA to housing to employment to whatever. Fast-paced, and I'd love to tell you the specifics. I probably have to review the notes as well. I did attend an update on tax issues affecting the cities, and I've already passed that presentation. I requested the lawyer who was giving that presentation to send me the slides, the PowerPoint, and I passed that on to Muriel for her updating as well. Bottom line, we... There was discussion on the California Cannabis Coalition versus City of whatever, which has to do with the citizen initiative, tax initiative. And agreement is, yep, only need 50% plus one, but we probably don't even have to go that route because if the city were to propose a community enhancement tax increase, sales tax increase, the community enhancement measure would be broad enough that it, too, would simply require a 50% plus one vote. And that would be, and that's what Dunsmere did, I think that's what...
Weed.
Weed also did. Maybe WaiRica did it, I can't recall.
Yes, they did.
So that could be where the flexibility lies. Good news for the Park District, apparently good news. It appears that there could be substantial additional funding coming to Parks as a result of a bill that passed, the legislature. I did spend, I think about two hours last week at the League of Cities webinar on the recently passed bills that the City, the League of Cities supports and opposes, primary opposition being to SB 649. 649, and this is the 5G wireless... The reason that 200 or 300 cities are on record of opposing it is not because the cities oppose the technology, but the legislation, the bill, takes away from cities any control as to where the cells would be sited. The Big Four, or cell companies, can decide, "We're going to put a cell there, we're going to put a cell there, we're going to put a cell there, we're going to put a cell there." And while they talk about small cells, the size of these small cells can be as large as 35 cubic feet, which, to put things in context, would be bigger than either Paul Engstrom or John Stackflath. things in context, would be bigger than either Paul Engstrom or John Stackflath. So, we could have that hanging in front of City Hall, in front of any business, anywhere, and the city has no say, would have no say, as to where they choose to put that. And there is a cap on how much the city can charge for putting in those cells. And the legislation or the bill, SB 649, takes away from cities the ability to enter into any sort of agreement other than you get money. The city gets money, but we can't say, I'll tell you what, if you do this for the city, we will do this for you. There's no ability to negotiate or have creative solutions, win-win solutions. That is why the California League of Cities has put a sample letter requesting the governor to veto on its website, asking all the cities to send that letter to the governor as soon as possible. The governor does have until October 15th to approve or veto any and all of the legislation, including SB 649. But, of course, the longer people wait without making comment, the less chance there is the governor is going to see the comments, greater chance he's going to act without comments. So, I don't know if we've taken a position against 649 already. We have. So, I think we, I think the city manager is clear to go in sending out the letter to the governor recommending veto. There are, I would encourage all the members of council to look at the league site, which lists the various bills that the League of Cities feels strongly about asking for approval of or veto of.
Sometimes they're neutral.
Pardon?
Sometimes they take a neutral position.
Right, sometimes they take a neutral position, but they, and that's not a concern. But the ones that they recommend veto on or the ones they are asking for approval on, I think we really should, whether we act individually or perhaps give our comments to city manager so that he can send out these position letters. We ought to be doing that as soon as possible. And the league actually makes it quite easy. Did I send to each of you the webinar?
Yeah.
The slides?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Yeah, if you just take a look at that, that is very helpful. And I think that's all I have to report. But we can keep talking until Councilmember Engstrom returns. Oh, actually, let me talk more about the annual conference. In addition to the tax issues, which I found very informative, I did go to as many of the vendors-
Oh, yeah, the vendors.
-as possible at the expo, including vendors for affordable housing. I talked with some of them and told them that City of Mount Shasta was interested in developing affordable housing. And got some cards from some of them that said, yeah, we may be located in Irvine, California, but we build affordable housing all over, and we would be interested in talking City of Mount Shasta, just by way of example. So, hopefully, we'll be following up through city staff with some of those folks. I also went to the OP site, BOOTH. I think that's short for Opportunity for Development Sites. It's, and they were inviting city representatives to, for 20 or 30 seconds, introduce their cities and what development opportunities exist in our cities, what type of developments we're looking for. So, I did take advantage of being on camera for 20 or 30 seconds, whatever. And we are now, City of Mount Shasta is now city listed on OP sites, showing, describing the types of developments we want, whether it is hotel, or amphitheater, or retail, or office space, or affordable housing, housing.
Do you have the website?
OP site. I do have, I think maybe opsites.org or opsites.com, probably.
OPSites.
OPSITES.com, I think.
OP sites.
And hopefully, so that's supposedly a site that developers look at to see which cities are interested in what types of development, attracting what type of development. So, hopefully, something will come of that. Maybe we can follow up on that connection as well.
Yeah.
I did talk with one of the vendors that installs solar and expressed that the city was interested in at least exploring a solar farm, solar field, down at the treatment plant, and was asked for us to send power usage information to that company so they could take a look at it and get back with us. Haven't done that yet, but hopefully, that will be something that perhaps we can do next week. All right?
Did you talk to the OpenGov?
Didn't talk with OpenGov.
I don't want to interrupt you, but-
Go ahead.
I did, one of the vendors was OpenGov, and so I chatted with them for a second. And then, there's quite a few of them that ended up doing follow-up emails after meeting the vendors. And OpenGov said that they actually worked with us in 2014. So, I'm going to see if I can see a little bit of the history. But OpenGov had a great financial charts, software, financial charts available for the public to view to answer a lot of questions.
I think City of Mount Shasta purchased OpenGov license. Muriel has used that to make the information more available to our constituents. I think it's available on our website, city website. You might talk with her about it. Some software that I was interested in, and there were a couple of different vendors there, was contact software so that we could better communicate with our community, our constituents, whether it's asking questions or getting comments from them. Some of it, I thought, was out of our price range, but I'd like to follow up on some others to see if that would be something that could potentially be suitable for Mount Shasta. So that Catherine Wilson can, you know, stay more busy than she is.
Forty, yeah.
All right. Enough of that. Anything else to report on attendance at appointed or outside meetings? Let's move to the next item, which I think is future agenda items. We have down there items A through F at the present time. Is there anything else that we should bring up on the agenda in the next 60 to 90 days that's not already on there that you can think of at this point in time?
I already mentioned looking at the library building capacity. So, I did talk with Matt Mello, and he said that he gave a capacity of 44, but he also gave a capacity of 55 based on whether they were going to move some bookshelves. So, I think there's an opportunity here to rearrange some of the furniture to get that capacity up.
Well, I'm supportive of looking at that issue on the agenda, because what I hear you saying, what I've heard in the past, is that sometimes the library is at capacity. And it could take a couple of years or longer before the library addition comes into existence. So, the question is, what do we do in the meantime? I think that's your question.
Basically.
So, why don't we add that to future agenda items sometime in the next 60 or 90 days? Que más?
The other thing we talked about is that we need to nominate a new mayor and mayor pro tem, and that's going to be the next 60 to 90 days.
That would, yeah, that would come up, I think we'd do that at the second meeting in November. Yes.
Mm-hmm.
Que más? English is the official language. No Spanish spoken. Okay, all right.
I'm going to keep pushing the library thing, just because I have a passion about it. One of the reasons I brought up defining a library and why it's important is because one of the things that libraries doing, which I think kind of goes well with our community, is putting in a music studio, a recording studio. And we have a fair amount of musicians in the area, people that, you know, they take it in high school, and they go on to college, and-
Maybe make one of those-
Giving the trend, I'm just, I just would love to see us open up to the discussion about what this building addition can be for our community, because how many, how often does a community get to build a building? You know, we built the initial library in '69, the addition in '89. Have we built a building since 1989, Tim? This may be the only opportunity for someone's lifetime to be involved with an interesting construction of a community building.
Well, we do have out the RFQ or RFP on the library.
Yeah.
Part of that process will be for the architect to meet with the citizens of Mount Shasta at least two to four times. And I think that would be a great opportunity for us to raise issues like that.
I'm saying, at this point, when the architect calls in to Juliana, the planner, and asks questions, are we going to be thinking about, in the meantime, what the possibilities can be that are outside a traditional library? Because there are, like I'm saying, many libraries doing very interesting things that mate really well with the community. And I'd love to see the 99.98% of people who haven't been involved yet, a bigger proportion of those people to be involved.
I know at least one person who's quite passionate, who's going to be vocal about it. Anything else that you want to put on future agenda item other than library capacity and?
Library redesign?
I mean, it'd be, it'd be cool. I mean, I think it's an opportunity to get some excitement about a very interesting project, a very interesting community project. And that's all I'm saying.
So, do we need to take further action in terms of the, in fact, I do think we need to take further action in terms of council compensation? That is an ordinance. And we need a first and second reading of that. I'd like to see that come before council at the next meeting.
Yes, that's with staff. We have to prepare the ordinance per the council direction and bring that back.
Yes, yeah. So, I'd like to have that come back sooner rather than later.
Okay.
And if that can come back at the next meeting, I'd like to see it on the next meeting.
So, should we, let's see if we can shoot for the last meeting in October for the first one.
I was suggesting the first meeting in October.
The first meeting in October, okay.
Why is the rush? I mean, he's saying-
Because, because the ordinance needs to be passed, and then 30 days thereafter before it becomes effective.
It won't be effective until you have a change of office?
I know it won't be effective until the change of office.
So, you have like a year?
That's true.
So, what's the rush?
You've got a good point. It could be the second meeting of October.
So, we're now at the second meeting?
Whatever, whatever works.
Okay. We'll get right on it.
I just hate to see things drop off the horizon.
We have, we have already a number of items for the ninth, including the strategic plan.
And did the-
Que más?
Did the police department ratify their part of the contract? Did I miss something? Or is it still open? They're working with that contract?
It's still open.
Is there ongoing negotiation, or are we?
It appears that it's no longer being discussed.
Well, it seems to me that it would be appropriate to make some effort to further the process, whether it's by a letter. I think a letter would be appropriate to encourage further discussion.
Right. Now, the ball is in their court, and they have chosen not to-
To work without contract?
Yes.
That's probably beyond this discussion of future agenda items.
Okay.
So, I apologize for going-
No problem.
-outside of, all right. Anything else? If not, we are adjourned.